Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the September 11th, 2023 Board of Education meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here, thank you. The first item on our agenda is written communication. Dr. Beavis, do we have any written communication?
We have no written communication this evening.
Okay, great. All right, the next item is items for information. The first item is district goals. So we received in our packet the district goals, the outcomes and measures. And what I want to say about that is I know it's our first time seeing the outcomes and measures, so certainly can have whatever conversation we need to have tonight. But the vote, are we going to vote? Yes.
Yes.
So the vote, we're voting on just the goals. We're voting on the language that we discussed
June.
in June, thank you, regarding the specific goal. So that's the vote. We're not voting on the outcomes and measures.
And so the administration is pleased to outline a series of outcomes and measures to evaluate the progress of the goals. And myself and Dr. Beavis and Dr. Kinsey and Dr. Levy all spent quite a bit of time developing this list. And I should say that there's one that hasn't made it to the appendix that we will like to lift up under Goal One. And it is an additional, which was an additional outcome. And that is to strive for a representative faculty aligned with our student demographics. And the measure would be the annual staffing report, which is a new, thank you, Pete, for pulling that up. That is something that is not reflected in your packet. It was a good catch from our Board President today that we had failed to include. And so there it is. So I guess we're going to open this up for discussion, for any questions or comments that you may have, either on your goals as they are written, and most certainly on the outcomes and measures.
I just have one tweak that I sent to Pete earlier under Goal Number One. And that's the word, it's just, it doesn't read quite properly right now. It should, that last phrase under Goal One where we say, "and its intersection with gender income LGBTQIA+ disabilities and status as emergent multilingual." I think status is missed, it's just in the wrong spot there. And it should read, that full sentence would read, "ETHS will eliminate the predictability of academic outcomes based upon race and its intersection with gender income LGBTQIA+ disabilities and emergent multilingual status." Because it's the status of all those things, not just the status of emergent multilingual.
Fair enough.
So I have that, and I do have another comment, but I just wanted to get that out there. Should I do my other comment?
That's fine, yeah.
Why not? I, I think this is great. I have no trouble with the goals. We've talked about them at multiple meetings. I have not, I have looked at the outcomes and measures, and I appreciate the wide variety, the in-depth nature of those outcomes and measures. I think we're making a stronger effort to include many points by which we can measure our work. What I want to urge, and it's not on the table as a specific item, is that we finally put together some sort of district dashboard that communicates our work on these goals. And we include that on our website and in other ways. Marcus and I have talked about this. I've been talking about it for the 14, almost 15 years that I've been on the school board. Because in my very first Triple I conference that long ago, I went to a program on district dashboards. It was all about communicating progress towards goals. And I talk about it almost every single year. And we've done absolutely nothing in all my years here towards developing that dashboard. Even though I think, you know, I don't think there's strong disagreement. I don't think we're trying not to do the dashboard. I think it's a matter of inertia. And I just, I guess I'd like to see that done after 15 years of asking. And I don't know if we need an official motion or resolution. I'm prepared to make it if that's what it takes. But I feel like we could reach consensus around coming up with something. And I think we're doing a better job at communicating in a lot of areas. But I can, you know, I still think the vast majority of Evanstonians have no idea what our goals are, even those who may have kids here at the high school. And I'm not, it's not really on them. That's on us and our inability to communicate consistently and regularly and clearly about this stuff, including at every single board meeting we have where we should be connecting everything we talk about to one of these goals. And we do that a little bit here and there. So I think that would help.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. It's a timely conversation. Just a few months ago, Pete had the Office of Research and Assessment working on a particular project. And when we got the report back, it had all of these really interesting data visualization tools that just got me so excited. And I told Pete that this is the new era for how we should be reporting data in the district. I mean, we were both sort of nerding out over it. And unfortunately, that staff person left, and we're hiring a new data analyst. But we're certainly committed to data transparency and creating some sort of a dashboard and a new way to show our progress. So Pete, you do want to share a little bit more about that?
Yeah, sure. Just for the record, that person left to get an advanced degree in statistics and analysis down at University of Chicago, so we couldn't really compete.
That's good to know.
And they were actually part of our NIRA fellows. So that's proof that the NIRA fellowship, that works for, unfortunately, for people whom we covet and said, oh, this would be great. I do think there's a real opportunity here. I mean, we looked at, Marcus and I looked at the Hanover Institute. They did a, we were talking about the joint goal. The Hanover Institute has a nice joint crosswalk visual as data viz, a data visualization piece as a dashboard. But using, you know, if we contract with someone like that, I think we could get a really nice interactive dashboard for our, for our community. I don't, I'm not so sure it would include every aspect, goal and measure, every measure in there, but it certainly would include a variety of them per, per goal. And I think it's doable now. Technology is at the point where we can, we can do it and not so onerously as before. So I think we can make it happen.
Well, and I have also mentioned to Marcus, and actually I think to you in the past, Pete, there's an organization called We All Count. Heather Kraus is the CEO, I believe. And they do some terrific work looking at data with an equity lens. And, and they talk a lot about presenting that information, asking the right questions. I've done some of their webinars. They have all sorts of great free stuff online. I think you can hire them too. But they're, they're really terrific, I think.
Thank you.
Yes.
So I, I wanted to say that I really like the way you all did the outcomes and measures. I think it's very clear. It's very practical. And I was thinking like, okay, how am I going to know if we did next year? And it just seems very clear. Like, it's a clear way to measure, you know, the outcomes are very clear. And then the measurements are very practical and pragmatic. And I really like that a lot because I think it helps us to focus and, and be clear on where we're doing okay and where we need to do more and all that. And from that, I would add to what the discussion around a dashboard. I would, I would take that philosophy of what I just said into any graphics because, you know, technology is at a point where you should be able to do things easily. And yet still, I find people doing these really, and I'm not saying we would do that, but just a cautionary tale that we want to make sure that it remains practical and clear and easy to use and read. And sometimes we all can get caught in the bells and whistles. And I just, I just, you know, cautionary tale. Because you've done a great job substantively of making it very plain and clear and, and easy to follow and, and to track over time. So, thanks, good job.
I think, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Monique.
So I, I agree with both Anne. You know, visually, if we could figure out a way to share this, that would be outstanding. I think it would make what you've done with the outcomes and the measures even more clear, you know, because people, especially in the community, can see it and understand it. However, I was thinking about Goal Two and Four. And I think because we changed this goal a little bit to talk about an environment centered on student well-being and then on the discipline committee. And I'm wondering how we can break down the incidents even further, or that process? Because we have often talked about how we support certain teachers that are doing the most referrals, you know, what additional support is needed. And I, and I think about that in the, I hate using the word pipeline of discipline, but that's what I think about. Like, there's a whole continuum of discipline incidents, you know? And, and so maybe that is, of course, an outcome that will be given to the committee to break down even further. But I, I don't want to lose sight of that, and I'm sure I won't when we have a meeting.
But we'll certainly make a note of that. As the first outcome, it says decrease the number of discipline incidents. We will certainly make a note that that should be discussed and unpacked at the discipline committee. Absolutely.
Because that is about, to me, it's, when we talk about an environment centered around students' well-being, you know, we're not just talking about the data. We're talking about, you know, the student's experience. And so I think about that. So then the other one, and I don't know why I'm saying this. Maybe it has something to do with this weekend, and I felt like I was very much Evanston this weekend. But when I look at community engagement and partnership, you know, I, I think the outcomes are excellent. And I, you know, I know measures are going to be what they're going to be. But I would also extend that to board expectation. And I know I haven't talked about, of course, I couldn't talk about this with my colleagues, right? Because it's not really, I would be out of order.
This is the time.
Right, this is the time.
Yeah.
But when I, I think about our responsibility for community engagement. And if we have one, I don't know. You know, do we have a responsibility to be present in the community as certain functions, to represent ETHS when we can? I'm not saying, you know, so that the students, one of the things that I shared when we were talking about this and when I was campaigning was that, you know, students really didn't know what we did or who we were. And, and so I think, not that they can all determine who we are or figure that out or give them that, but, you know, what responsibility do we have as an elected official? And not just put it all on pad, right, as the president? But what do, what responsibility do we have as elected officials to engage our community, to be present, to show up in different spots? We are the only high school in this community, and we have a lot of power, whether you know it or not. And, and so when we show up, you know, it's, it's obvious. We're there, you know, and we're recognized. And so I just, I just think, I don't know what, what an outcome would be or anything like that. But I just, when we're talking about that and being elected by the community, I think we also have a responsibility to strengthen the community by being engaged ourselves beyond this board or this desk right here.
No, and Monique, I completely agree with you. And I think it's a great idea to incorporate that here. We taught at our retreat last year, or earlier this year, I guess it was. We talked about this, and we talked about how we would implement that. And I would love for us to go back to that and, and talk about how to do that. I think, I mean, I don't mean to call you out, but you as a, you have a unique position in the community in that.
I know, and I, yeah.
No, no, I'm not criticizing at all. I'm saying that's great. You are more plugged in than maybe I am or, you know, other people because of your job as well as your presence as a board member. So I, I mean, I would love to benefit from, from your knowledge, you know? Or how we figure out how to do that, I think would be great. And, and put that into an expectation because I think you're right. I think it is important for us to be out there and to, if not, to listen and to see and to engage. All of that is part of this, this goal. And, you know, one of the things that I, you know, one of the things I was looking for that I understand why we're, we are here. It's easier to say, okay, we had this many events. But I would like us to get to a point, not immediately, where we can say, and here's what happened. Here's some engagement that led to. And I think what you're bringing up is a piece of that, a very important piece. So I'm 100% on board with you.
Yeah, and I don't know. I mean, and I understand my, my perspective or my lens or my whatever. But I, I think there's an opportunity to divide and conquer or to determine even as a board where it would be important for us to be present. So, you know, I don't know how we do it, and I know life is already busy. But I, I think, and we have given a lot to just even serve to this capacity. But, yeah, this is, this is key. Community engagement includes the board.
We actually talked about a few, yeah, some, some strategies, some ideas when we worked together. And Liz, I believe you brought some, some, some ideas forward at, at the retreat. I know that's, that's
I'm trying to remember.
Was it January?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember exactly what we talked about. I think, I think what I was saying was something along the lines of the benefits that we have while we're campaigning
Yeah.
of being in the community and hearing from people is something that I would like to see all of us have that benefit all the time outside of campaign seasons.
Right, right.
And just, and we did actually talk about, like, thinking of specific community events. And then, like you were saying, dividing and conquering and having individuals go to certain things and having a representative at specific events. That's what I remember from that talk.
I remember that as well. And I like the idea, Monique, you said that we're the only high school in town. And, you know, it is true that when I talk about the high school, I often just say the high school.
Yeah.
And everyone knows exactly what, what we're talking about, exactly. And, you know, folks have feelings. They've had experiences with the high school, their own personal experiences or through their, their children. So I think that it's really important for us to think about, you've heard me say this before, telling our story, being present, telling our story so that we can make sure that people understand what we're doing. And this whole dashboard would, would support that, help that.
And if I could add one other thing, you all also talked about bringing back the pool of the board as you get out and talk in the community and engage in certain events, that that was a practice that the board had once done, was to say at the pool of the board, this is where I went, this is how exciting it was, it was good to see kids. And bringing that practice, practice back to the meetings.
Mira, you have your.
So one, one way to get more involved is, you know, just have some kids and don't let them grow up, because some of you have had them here. And now I'm just like, I feel like I'm involved in that way with my son now, one kid out. And so I don't want to assume that as a luxury, but to really think about what you're saying, how else can I besides going to, you know, open house or things like that? That just happened to be very convenient. But it is something also that is incredibly, I feel very fortunate to have that insight into our school that way. The other thing I was thinking about is the cohesion between the goals. And I feel like, Pete, you started, and you've shared with us a portrait of a graduate or some work in that area. And so I'd really love to see these two come together in that way, meaning the goals and that work. And then I was thinking about how our data science classes and the work that our kids could do. And especially if we want to keep this very much centered and grounded in our school, it would be, I think, kind of cool to have our kids and our staff. But our kids especially help us to do the dashboard versus maybe sending it out. So that, that could be something for us to think about.
Be great. All right.
So, oh. Small thing. I was scrolling down, the fiscal accountability goal. I remember we agonized over this language a little bit because it just seemed hard to get a hold of what we were trying to convey. And I love the words that we've come up with here, equity, integrity and transparency. That seems to me to capture the key things that we want in how we budget and, and how we hold ourselves fiscally accountable. No issue at all there. My question is, as I look at outcomes and measures, and these are fairly similar, I think, to the outcomes and measures we've had in years past. But as I read them, I have a hard time appreciating where the equity piece comes out. I, I can see integrity and transparency because the bond rating and getting financial awards, et cetera, all at least imply, even if, and perhaps are even explicitly about integrity and transparency. What I don't think is made clear in the outcomes and measures that we have listed here is the equity piece. And I think that needs, we need to capture something, and this is too wordy for the actual goal language, but maybe there's a way you can capture it in outcomes and measures. We need to capture something around that whole equity idea that equality is not equity and that, you know, our financial resources need to go where they are most needed. And I don't, I don't know exactly how you do that here, but I'm just going to toss that out there and leave it for you administrators to figure it out.
Thank you. And you'll see how we do it in practice, but we'll see how we capture it here.
I think it should be captured here. I think it should be explicitly.
To that point, yeah. I think it's something along the lines of demonstrating value-based budgeting. We would get to it, but.
Well, we say that, though. So again, up above, we say we're employing values-based budgeting.
Right.
And we've gone around in this circle before about what, you know, I think Jonathan Baum used to, you know, say, well, what is, no, there was somebody else on our board who was like, what the heck is that? And why, you know, and we've, we're going around. So I don't think the answer is to say that equity is values-based budgeting or that values-based budgeting is equity, because I think we just end up in the same place without further clarification.
Right, what I was suggesting is, what does that look like?
Sorry, yes. I may have cut you off.
I think that in, in reviewing the budget, when we get there, it's there.
Tonight?
It's, yeah, we'll get there tonight, and it's there. It's, yeah, we can, we can add all those pages, all those bullet points because it's, it's clear. I don't know how to sum it all up, because that's really how we get there.
Well, and it could be that the outcome is the part of the goal that, Gretchen, you said you, you didn't say you don't understand, but you said you got the first few words of the, the goal. But it could be that the outcome is, is something along with values-based budgeting, right? And then, I mean, you got to put more words to it. Instead of that being a part of the goal, that's the outcome.
Well, and I think one of the things, I talked to Kendra and Marcus about this or emailed with them before the last board meeting. I think that one of the ways, and this relates to Gretchen's idea of the dashboard, is examples really help. Because it, these concepts can be, well, okay, great, what is that? Like, we kind of know, we, I mean, I feel I know what it is, and I can draw an example, but I don't know if everybody can do that. And I certainly don't expect the community that doesn't sit down with the budget for as long as we do to really grasp that immediately. So I think the more we can have some kind of running examples, either new examples that come up or one, and/or, probably and, other examples where you can see over time what that looks like. So maybe it's something to do with curriculum or maybe it, you know, I, I can think of so many different examples where our budgeting and equity came really clearly together. And I just think we need to tell that story, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Right, so, so we somehow, I don't know, this is, this is not an electronic document, but you're actually talking about a link that would just have them.
It could be just a link to, like, some examples to highlight and give examples. And I think the, like, there's different ones. Like, one could be very, very much clear. If we're investing in a certain class that is really focused on ensuring equity, that's clear. But we also have put money into spaces to ensure equity. And that's a really cool thing. And I don't know that everybody understands that. Again, not us, but the, the community really kind of sees, oh, yeah, that is equity, right? If we're making sure that these spaces are more inclusive, what have you. So I, I just think we have so many interesting stories to tell that it would be interesting to capture those and, and connect to that.
All right. Okay, so voting is later in the meeting, so thank you for that discussion. We have some ideas to keep working on these measures. They are very good. Thank you for all the work that the administration has done to make this clear. And then we know exactly how we are going to think about and look at these, these goals. So I'm really, really pleased with this stuff. I'm going to vote yes. All right. Okay, next item. Dr. Beavis is over there. New courses and course changes and course deletion proposals.
Okay, the headline is there are no deletions.
All right.
So just a brief, this is brief, so we can save time for the discussion. But up here is the rapid process that we apply to this, to course additions, deletions and changes. A department chair has developed initial recommendations. They do that in consultation with teachers. They align them to district priorities, agree. I have to agree to bring them forward to the board ultimately. Board of Education approves, and teachers will, with department chairs will develop curriculum and assessments. Input, we, we go through the curriculum forum, which is made up of teachers, community member, family representation, representation from all, from teachers and support staff. And we have board member representation on that committee. And then finally, the decision rests with the Board of Education. This is a first read, and then the vote would occur in October. So we have four new courses. The first one is Arts and Innovation. We have a digital drawing and painting. What we discovered is we don't have enough along the lines of the digital piece, right? Digital integration into the arts. We're going to have a digital drawing and painting course. We're also offering sports officiating certification. And one of the things that we did, I've checked with Marie Levitino today, and we're going to amend that recommendation for that proposal to include softball and flag football. This will balance the offerings, right? In terms of officiation, officiating opportunities for both boys and girls' sports. IHSA determined boys and girls' sports. And notably, our flag football team, our girls' flag football team makes its debut game this Friday at Lazzir. It's the first time we've had flag football at ETHS as an IHSA club. It's the first time we've had flag football at ETHS as an IHSA club sport, so come on out and show your support. Now, I did really just bury the lead. As part of this course, students will be IHSA certified to ref at least four sports of their choice from that, from that menu. It's very exciting. There's an officiating crisis in Illinois and across the country. And this is different than our old officiating course, which offers house league officiating. So you can, you can be a referee for, you know, team soccer in Evanston for the little kids, or you can do baseball, EBSA baseball. But this actually brings you to the IHSA level as a referee, which is pretty exciting and a great opportunity for our students to learn how to manage not only players on the, on the field, but also coaches and unfortunately sometimes parents. But all that's included in the training, so, so it's kind of exciting. We also are going to offer two, we're looking to offer two dual credit expansion courses into science. This, this offer is our first time we've expanded dual credit offerings into science. And it's not easy because it requires specific certifications. We were able to determine that we had several teachers that meet the requirement to teach Introduction to Life Sciences, which is a science class, college science class for non-science majors, which is kind of interesting offering for high school kids, right? So again, that would be an elective that students could take junior or senior year. And we're also looking to offer zoology. And the interesting thing about zoology is that it was developed at Oakton by an ETHS teacher. Greg Ruber has developed that with Oakton, and they're actually a little bit behind us because in October, we're going to say, you know, we want to do this for dual credit, and they're going to get their, they have to go through another additional hoop because they don't currently offer zoology at Oakton. So, you know, they're going to get it across the finish line, we're going to be able to offer it, but we're really, really excited about that. And that, that demonstrates the leadership of ETHS teachers, really. An ETHS teacher going above and beyond, and I just want to, want to make sure that we're all aware of, of that. So those are the new courses. And I'm going to, you know, and then we'll go to course changes, but are there any questions about these new course offerings? And we will have more dual credit opportunities. We're looking to articulate additional dual credit courses remainder of this school year. If they do come on board, I will bring them to the school board for formal approval, but these are the two we have already, ready to go.
Yeah, the dual credit is very exciting, really. Good to see that. The officiating, do, would kids be paid to do that?
Yes.
That's an important piece.
Yes. They will be paid. And they'll be paid well.
That's great. That's great. Oh, yes.
Sure. Well, Pete, you already addressed something that I was going to ask you about, but I just wanted to further clarify. So I noticed that zoology didn't seem to have a course code at Oakton College yet. And so my question was, for this, are you confident in the two institutions catching up with each other so that we'll know that this course will definitely be transferable for the students who take it? How long is that process to get a transfer code?
They will know, the, the actual code and the portability code should be ready by November. We can also though, I mean, if we have to, we could articulate it with a, with a, an Illinois college that already has it. But we're looking to partner with Oakton. But if worst comes to worst, we will go and articulate it since it's already written and done with a different institution if we have to. We don't want to do that. Oakton is, Oakton College, good partners, and they've been really, really great to work with in terms of our enrollment, our dual credit enrollment, which Dr. Campbell's going to talk about later tonight.
And I guess the other question I would have would be, and this relates in a way to our budget and our planning in terms of how we spend our money on resources and teachers and spaces. Lab space can often be at a premium. So this is great that we have some new options. Is that going to be difficult to provide the environment and space to do it? I don't know if my question is making sense.
Yeah, I get it. I get it. So, you know, we have a, so the short answer is no, we can utilize current space. And we can also utilize the space upstairs where we actually, for, we have a, we have a space upstairs where we can keep, where we keep some animals. Turtles and such.
The turtle?
Yeah. So there's your, you know, we, we do have, it's not quite a menagerie, but we would have the opportunity to study some animals up close within the confines of our current facility.
Yeah, the high school.
The high school. So I'm going to transition, if that's okay, to the changes, because the change, a lot of cleanup occurs in the changes, right? So, Arts and Innovation, the cleanup in Arts and Innovation really has to do with requiring students to be able to read music, to take the music theory class. So that's important as a prereq, being able to read music. It wasn't there before and it turned out to be a barrier, actually. Some kids would sign up for the class and then have to drop the class because they weren't fluent in reading notation, reading musical notation. Multilingual services, you'll see a variety of changes.
I'm sorry, Pete, can I ask a quick question about the music?
Yeah.
Is there, do we offer other classes that teach you how to read music? Or is that you only learn through taking an instrument?
You take an instrument, part of our band classes and things like that. So that's how you would do that. So multilingual services is the next big, there's a, there's quite a few. There's 20 changes overall, and I think like, if I'm looking at this, 15 of them, 14 or 15 of them are in multi-language services. It's all cleanup and alignment to access and WIDA designations and, and alignment. So just transparency in what the courses are and what the placements are. And they're all, they're bound by access score and they actually are able to level the acquisition level, so they're more in line with, instructionally in line with what students know and are able to do in terms of their English development. And there's a whole sequence of, of courses that that applies to.
Question?
Yep.
So as far as the, what used to be English as a second language, it makes a lot of sense. The, those courses have titles like entering, emerging, developing, bridging. I noticed that for the other courses, they, the common theme is that they seem to be changing to a name that has sheltered in it. And I was wondering, so for instance, Shelter United States History, is that what would be listed on a student's transcript? And do we know how that would be perceived?
It would be US history. Internally, it'd be sheltered because we want to just be clear that it is a sheltered course with the folks. And sheltered mirrors the state language. That's why we're doing that. All right, world languages, we're trying something new in world languages, we're going to try it out. We have, it's a small, it's two teachers, it's four classes, and we're looking to offer that. All assessments that are performative, assessments that are common, assessments that are performative, and assessments that are recursive in that you can take them multiple times. And they're aligned to proficiency standards. And it's scaffolded. So what we want to do is we want to designate that assessment profile within those, that course sequence as an, as honors level assessment and instruction. So we're trying to see if, working toward a model of essentially a certified honors curriculum. And we're looking to scale that potentially from this really small pool, which we're going to try out, right? We're going to see how it goes, we're going to monitor it. They've been doing it for two years as a mixed level course, and they've been integrating this assessment profile into it. The difference between that and Pathway to Honors is this is 100% common assessment, 100% retakes, and 100% summative in, in terms of your grade. There's no grade for homework, there's no grade for practice, it's all about performing. We're going to take a look at it, we're going to analyze it, we're going to see how it goes, we'll report back. And if it's successful, we'll look to make small adjustments to other world language curriculum and assessment. Because it really fits nicely in that arena, because it is, there are performance standards and that's really about language acquisition. So that's really what, what we're looking at doing. But we're going to start small.
I have a quick question about the multilingual services. There's a shifting in the language from ESL to EEM. Is that a shift in a language that like we as the board should be aware of? Is that how we're now referring?
Yes.
Okay.
Good question. And to that end, we're going to have Lindsay Rose, our multilingual services director, come and speak to the board at the next board meeting, do a thorough report. And she'll update us on that language. In fact, we're all practicing.
Okay.
We're all, as administrators, as teachers, we're all practicing that transition this school year. So it's, it's a great question, Liz, and we're going to, she's going to brief the board on all of this when she reports to the board in October.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
Can I go back a topic? And I just, could you maybe explain again, and maybe different words? What did you mean when you said with the German course sequence, becoming a certified honors course?
Yeah, what we're trying to do is say, currently, it's a mixed level course, so students need to take it for honors or regular credit. Similar to our, you know, we have a few of those courses, they primarily exist in world languages at this point, everything else is Pathway to Honors. And when we do Pathway to Honors courses, they're typically large enrollments, right? Like four or 500 kids, 12, 13 teachers. So we developed an assessment profile, but there's a lot of flexibility instructionally and a lot of flexibility in terms of additional assessments. The difference with this model is it reflects grading for equity. There's a, there's this great book called, it reflects all of the grading equity principles, brings them into the classroom, and they're all common. Now, you may say, why are they all common? Because there's only two teachers. So it's a lot easier to get to that commonality. So when I say we want to try this out, we're going to monitor it. If it works, we're going to look to expand it to smaller courses, say like Japanese might be a place to do this, right? And then if it works there, maybe we expand it. But it, it's going to be very difficult to scale to larger, more, more, more highly-enrolled courses, because when you add more than two or three teachers, you get more variation potentially. So, especially if you have 13 people teaching it. You might not be able to get to the point where everyone agrees to do the same assessments with the same retakes. And though, and it might not be performative. If it's science, you might not have performance-based assessments necessarily. Might have a lot of content-based assessments along with the performative piece. That's why there's that variation. We'll keep you posted. All right. Good?
Yes.
Thanks. First, the press, should we do that?
Yes.
Okay, I'll just stay here and do it.
Yeah, so, yeah.
So we have Press 112. What you'll notice about Press 112 is that it is overwhelmingly review and just minor language updates and reference updates. There's no new policies in there. That's the, that's the headline. The next one, I promise, Press 113 will have a lot. That's my promise.
Do you know that for sure?
Yeah, I know for sure.
Oh.
I, I mean, I, we got a heads up that it was coming.
All right. Okay, so next month, we'll vote on the new courses, changes, and we'll vote on the press. All right. No questions? Liz, your lights on? You don't have any questions? That's okay, that's okay. All right, any comments from the public, Dr. Beavis?
We have no comments from the public this evening.
Are you sure?
Positive. It's empty.
All right. The next item is FOIA. We have six FOIAs listed, seven?
Seven, one, two, three, four, five, six.
Six.
One from ESPY, one from Rendazzo, one from Gertzmeier, one from Hayden, one from White, and another one from Rendazzo. And those responses are in your packet.
Yes, they are. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Next item on the agenda is board committee reports. I know it's early, so has anybody had any committee meetings?
I have, but Pete just reported.
All right. Okay. Wow, that's true.
We had policy, but Pete did that too.
Thank you, Pete.
Pete the shadow board member.
Okay. Okay, then, we are at student board.
You know, I will just say that there was an EdRed program on Friday, and I, I know that Leah went to the EdRed legislative breakfast. I don't know if you had anything to say about it.
Okay, I actually took a couple notes. I didn't know if that was like comments later or if that was a committee new to all this. Hold on, let me, I went to the EdRed legislative breakfast, and what, we were in small groups and we were with Illinois state legislators. And the topics, I thought, what we talked about, I think, is a good indication of what a lot of schools are, are dealing with. And so the topics that we talked about and then shared as a group were staff, staff shortages, the impact and quantity of state mandates, school safety, school finance, the impact of TIFs, social and emotional learning, and the, just transitioning in new arrival students. So those were the topics we talked a lot about. I also thought it was really interesting, I happened to sit at the table with State Senator Laura Fine, who's Chair of the Illinois Senate Behavioral and Mental Health Committee. And she talked a bit about the Behavioral Health Workforce Education Center that Southern Illinois School of Medicine, Southern Illinois University School of Medicine, and UIC College of Social, Jane Adams College of Social Work, is working with the Illinois Board of Higher Education and the Illinois Department of Human Services to increase Illinois's capacity to recruit, educate, and retain behavioral health professionals. And I think that's really important, I mean, given the, the social, emotional challenges that we know our teens and just our, right now, people in general deal with.
Thank you. Very interesting topics, too. All right, anything else? All right.
Wait, can I just say one thing? Is this, would this be a time to talk about open house? As a commu, committee?
No.
Just kidding.
So we are, when we get to the closing and polling of the board, it really was, but, yeah. Yeah. Good to throw it out there. Okay, Nicole, why don't you jump in before somebody else starts?
Okay. So happy beginning of the school year, everyone.
You too.
I just, everyone's adjusting well to the new school year, I think, from what I've seen. A lot of the kids by me are seniors because I'm a senior. So there's a lot of tension in the air because it's a season of college applications. But other than that, everything is great. Clubs are beginning to meet, sports and student activities have already been started, so they're pretty active, and we've had a couple football games. So the Community Service Club is also active because of that. I'm seeing a lot of freshmen get involved and sophomores too, so I'm excited that the, this new generation of underclassmen are really putting themselves out there. And then the Student Union has had two meetings so far, and some of the, we've, through these meetings, we've gone through like goals for the year. And one of the main things is recruiting more members who reflect the identities of students here at our school. So the Student Union should also represent the entire student body. And we want to make sure that it isn't just a bunch of people who look the same and think the same. So that's one thing we're really looking at for this school year, and we're hoping to achieve that by partnering with some other student organizations. Because sometimes, like, other organizations like SOAR, Team ASAP, the Black Student Union, and like Emerge, other programs, we all kind of have the same idea, same root beliefs. And sometimes it's hard to solve these rooted problems in our school when we're all going at it in different ways, when we could, you know, really unite together and think of one way we can really make an impact. So that's also one thing we're looking at. And then this year, I also have an Evanstonian column, so I kind of write a letter to the student body. The first one was in August. I didn't really have that much to say, I kind of just told them what I do, what to look out for. But I'm looking forward to having some more communication with the entire student body and really staying active on all platforms, really getting to know people, maybe getting into the lunchrooms, talking to everyone. And yeah, that's all I have.
Nice. Great. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. All right. Dr. Campbell.
Thank you. All righty. Guess I should say happy school year too, right? Thank you, Nicole. All right, so we are a month into the new school year and already there's some really great things that I want to share with you that highlight the district's four priorities. And those are equity literacy, social emotional learning, and post-high school planning. I want to start by highlighting our dual credit program with Oakden College. This program helps prepare our students for life after high school and offers them the chance to receive college credit for certain courses in the arts and innovation and mathematics departments. We recently opened up the application and registration process this school year and are looking forward to 100% enrollment for our 335 dual credit students, which is up from 181 last school year. You'll be hearing more details about this in a future board report, but we've already broken a record for ETHS. We have more dual credit registrations in the history of the school than ever before. And so you'll be hearing more about that later. We hosted a successful open house at the end of August where we welcomed more than 1,600 families and students. And as I mentioned to our staff, I heard from families throughout that evening about their positive experiences with the staff and their appreciation for the ways we are building community with students every day, including the meaningful engagement work around our district's equity work. And this year, many of our leadership team members supported engagement work by calling families to personally extend an invitation to open house. Our staff connected with over 400 families who may not yet feel connected with our school community. We prioritized outreach to families whose students are identified as emerging language learners, students with attendance concerns, and students currently on social probation. I heard that many families expressed appreciation for this personalized outreach. It was an incredible turnout. We had many interpreters supporting families as they navigated the building and our resources. Our teachers, grade level teams, and many of our administrators were also on hand. And of course, a strong showing from our student ambassadors always make a difference. So I want to thank everyone for their hard work and commitment, including our principal, Dr. Kinsey, for creating such a welcoming environment for open house at ETHS every single day. And then finally, I want to express some gratitude for the ways that ETHS staff stepped up during those two hot day, well, there were more than two hot days, but for the really hot days of 115 degree heat indices. As you know, we experienced these dangerous hot temperatures for a couple of days and in August we had, and September. And so while we always have a contingency plan, what we did this year was something unique and different. So we moved all of our, it gets really hot in the PE wing, right? Just really hot. So we moved all of our PE classes to our auditorium. It's got a brand new chiller up there, so it's nice and cold. And 3,600 students participated in some mindfulness exercises with Jenny Arrington for two whole days. Jenny took 3,600 students for two days, nonstop, no lunch, teaching the kids breathing and so many other things to get them started. And it was a great foundation for our PE teachers to continue this mindfulness work in their classes and other teachers to continue it as well. So I just want to thank the PE staff, Marie Levettino, and all the administrators involved with that, and thank Jenny for two days worth of work. I don't know how she did it. You know, for two days worth of work where all the blocks on Wednesday, on Tuesday, 1, 3, 5, 7, 9, right, 1, 3, 5, 7, and then the next 2, 4, 6, and 8, all day, every kid. So every kid in this high school got that. We call that a tier one approach and we were very, very excited to, you know, reflect one of our strategic priorities, which is social emotional learning. So thank you to the PE staff and Marie and Ty and everyone, and thank you to Jenny Arrington. That concludes my report.
That's great.
Dr. Campbell, can I ask a question that hopefully acts, allows us to celebrate even more?
Sure.
And that is, did I see in the budget we're about to talk about that we are actually helping pay for the dual credit registrations of students?
Yes, you will see that.
Because I think that's amazing and that's gonna not, I mean, because I think that's gonna help
That's right.
more students do it because there otherwise can be that financial barrier. So I thought that was really great to see.
That's right, thank you. The school is paying those registrations for the, for ETHS students. And I gotta say, having 335 students registered for dual credit is a monumental move forward in, in our dual credit effort. So thanks to Pete and the CNI department for really moving that work forward.
That's amazing. Wow. Well, thank you. Thank you for that report. It's great. All right, so we have a little preview as we can see the screen. The hearing for the 2023, 2024 budget for the Evanston Township High School is now called to order. The first order of business is the acceptance of the notice of publication.
Thank you, President Savage Williams. On August 3rd, 2023, the notice of public hearing for the final budget was published. The notice of publication is included in your packet.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to accept the notice of publication of the budget hearing? Some more.
Second.
All right, second.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. The next order of business is a short presentation of the budget by our CFO Kendra Williams.
Thank you. All right, so the time has come for our final budget to be presented as we do have to do before September 30th. So if you guys want to just go through this journey with me, I'm super excited to present yet another balanced budget. 17 years strong of presenting balanced budgets.
Awesome.
And so our cash reserves and fund balances continue to be within acceptable ranges per our, the fund balance policy that we have. And of course, there's just a strong commitment to long-term fiscal sustainability. And as we go through, we'll kind of talk about that, especially when we get to the values base budgeting part, about how even with the fiscal accountability, we make sure that that is interwoven in everything that we do. And so we'll go through a number of things, but before I get too deep into the numbers, I did want to handle one administrative task and let you guys know that there was an update to the budget book that was posted. There was an update to the budget that was posted in the board book. And so for that update, I just wanted to highlight what that was about so that you're clear on what you're looking at. Because when you're looking through 280 pages, it could be a needle in a haystack to see exactly where the changes are. And so what happened is that in some of our major accounts, such as English, science, math, those accounts, we budget for transportation in the 40 fund, but the number is only, changes by one digit. And inadvertently, those 40 fund accounts got pulled into the education fund. So they're reported in the 40 fund, but you would have had one line that shouldn't have been there in the education fund. And so because that got highlighted, it was removed, edited. And so the tentative budget didn't have that error. The final budget that you were given on Thursday did, and so that was corrected. And then, of course, when we post it on our website as well, it'll be corrected. So I just wanted everybody to know exactly what happened there. So we went over this too in the tentative budget, right? And so just for the, you are here on this map. We're at the public review and then tonight the approval and filing. After, after we go through this short presentation, the filing will happen within 30 days. It has to happen within 30 days of, of the approval by the board. And so that's when we'll have it filed with the state. And then we'll complete, well, you never truly complete this process because as you can see, once you get through step phase five, you really just start off by planning the next year. I jokingly told Marcus earlier that somebody did approach me about the FY25 budget today. And I was like, I just have to make it through today. But yes, let's talk, you know? And so it's just, you're constantly on that cycle and so, yeah. And so just some of the considerations in doing the budget, just the limitations that we have because we're tax capped with PTEL. And then is one of the biggest things, right? When we have such high inflation. Another one, just in talking about inflation, and we know how that was closely related to everything that we went through with the pandemic. And so there's just a number of things. There were, we, during the pandemic as well, we had a substantial amount of SRR funding that we're not seeing in this budget. And so just want to highlight some of those things that have to be considered when putting the budget together. And this also, I just spoke about PTEL, but just shows how, you know, we're capped at that 5% for these couple of years when we know that inflation has greatly exceeded that. And so we're, we're still living with that. And then as we're going through, I just want to also, you know, we oftentimes talk about how this budget compares to last year, but I also just want to make sure that I'm highlighting just some of the changes from even the tentative budget till this, to the final budget for you guys. So for that, for the final budget, we have a budget of 105.2. We were about 104.9 before, so there's about a $300,000 difference increase in the budget for the final budget. And that, those, excuse me, expenditures, about 40,000 was in the operations and maintenance fund, and then the remainder of that was in the education fund. The other funds remained the same as they were in the tentative budget. And so the operating budget is 95 million for FY24. And here it's listed, the education, operation, and maintenance, transportation, working cash and tort fund are what make up that operating budget. And then, of course, we have bond and interest, IMRF, and social security, capital improvement for all of the other funds. So school districts are heavily relying on property taxes. So over 80% of our revenues are due to property taxes and the support that we're able to receive from community members through property taxes. So, you know, we take that quite seriously because we know that we're being entrusted with these funds and so we want to make sure that we're putting them to great use. And so just really tying in that fiscal accountability piece. And we already talked about PTEL and so we, and that we're working with the last two years because when we're talking about property taxes, because our fiscal year goes from July 1st to June 30th, we're always having a blend of the last two years of CPI. So our property taxes are, the budget is increasing by 5.5% from last year. And so of course, you know, that includes like the lev, with the levy, new property that rolls onto the, comes onto the tax rolls. And then also just an adjustment in how back taxes are calculated. In the past, if you would have taxpayers that would get exemptions and different things on their, their taxes where it would be reassessed, that would impact the district in that, that money would then be taken away in future years, right? And so sometimes, or not even sometimes, that's something that was happening each year, but now there has been adjustment in how that's calculated. And so because we don't have to, I don't want to use the word penalize, but because there's been an adjustment in how that's calculated, we were able to have our property taxes increasing at 5.5% rather than just the 5%, 5% tax cap. Corporate personal property replacement tax. So this is an interesting roller coaster. So our corporate personal property replacement tax is actually increasing by 8% compared to the FY23 final budget. However, it is noteworthy that although it was budgeted in the 4 million range last year, we were able to actually receive, once the actuals came in, we received closer to 6 million, which is excellent. So this is actually a revenue stream that for years has been increasing. And we always make every attempt to budget revenues conservatively because, you know, just because it has been increasing, that's been the trend, we don't know that that's going to happen continually. And so even though it came in at over 6 million in FY23, I was like, hmm, let's be conservative here and budget it at 5.5 million in the tentative budget. And so it actually came in because between the tentative budget and the final budget, we start to get some more concrete numbers. And so once that estimate got released, it got released at 4.6. So that was a $900,000 difference that it was like, how is this going to work now? But thankfully, you know, like I said, balanced budget, we, it all turned out okay because we did have some other revenues that thankfully came in that we weren't necessarily able to budget for initially. So property taxes being one of them, initially we had a budgeted at 4.75%. Now that went up to 5.5%, so was able to really level out the fact that that, that was a difference of 900,000. But it was quite interesting because we were super ecstatic about getting the 6 million last year. It really, of course, it's just helpful with all of the needs that we have as a district and even with the increased expenditures that we saw in areas such as tuition or transportation. So it was really helpful and very exciting and kind of like a burst to my balloon to find out that that would not be the case this year. But yet and still, we, we push on. And so one of the good news items that we got was that we were going to get an E-rate reimbursement of 400,000 and that was not budgeted for in the tentative budget. So just wanted to highlight some of those different changes that we've had, both up and down. And then this chart just really is able to, you know, be a graphic for how the percentages break out, how that pie is broken up when we're talking about the revenues. Evidence-based funding is consistent, is expected to be consistent as it has been for a number of years now. And then just some slight changes in the other categories, very slight. So that's revenues. And then just to talk about expenditures, we have our expenditures grouped into different categories, salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies and materials, capital outlay, tuition, and miscellaneous. And so as you all know from reviewing the budget, right? We have like 100, over 100 pages really showing all of those different line items. And so it's a lot of information because we have it broken out also by departments so that we're able to really capture all of that information. And so the majority of the district's budget is dedicated to salaries and benefits, which is greatly driven by negotiated contracts. Salaries are increasing by four, 5.47% from FY2023. And then also capital outlay has decreased by 7.23% in the education and operating and maintenance funds. And then there, from the tentative budget to the final budget, there was an increase in tuition. And so that's attributed to the FY24 Park School budget. So based on the Park School budget and what the district's portion is estimated to be in that budget, we had to increase that amount for tuition. And then once again, just a graphic to kind of show things in a different way. So want to bring up the district goals here for, that we went over even earlier today because of course we tie in our district goals into everything that we do, including the budget. And we were talking a great deal about it. I was, I mean, the discussion was so wonderful tonight, but I just really felt like there were a few people that were stealing my shine because I was like, let's talk values-based budgeting. And I think everyone that went up today said something that I was intending to highlight, but I also love it because it just.
We like to hear it.
Yes, because, and, and I love it, right? Because it affirms how what I do is interconnected and how, and what everyone else does and, and how we all work together, not just on your small piece, but all, it's all interwoven. And so here we are.
That's so true.
Yes. So of course, instruction being our top priority, right? We're here for our students and making sure that they have what they need. And so we recognize the fact that of course we have limited resources, but we always want to make sure that we're furthering the initiatives of the district to care for our ETHS community, maintaining a reasonable student teacher ratio, and then avoiding layoffs wherever possible. So these are just some of the things that of course, just off the top, we're always focused on. But to dig into the greatness, we'll also talk about just some more specific items that can be pulled out from the budget. And it's a little difficult, right? Because I don't want to brag, but there's a lot of greatness happening here at ETHS, right? A lot to be proud of. And so, you know, just to be able to kind of pick some things that are new to this year and try to limit myself just a little bit, you know? Because I didn't want to keep us here all night, but it, it's just amazing, right? We could just go on and on. And the budget, you know, I, I tell people, it's a lot of information. And the budget, you know, I, I tell people, it's a lot of information, but it tells a story. It tells a story because we're putting our money where our mouth is, right? And so, just making sure that staffing is focused on meeting student needs. So, we, you know, we've, we've heard about it and we've talked about it. The mental health needs, trauma, school refusal, truancy, residency, social emotional learning, English learners and the school, the school-to-prison pipeline. We know that our students here, here at ETHS are affected by all of these things. And so, we've had the multilingual services department that we've been able to pour into. Also, the creation of a position for restorative practices coordinator, that's really able, able to help our students and staff with conflict resolution. The director of residency and truancy to just really help our babies be where they need to be. All of those things are factored in and play a part within the creation of the budget. And then, continuing to fund our equity work to address racial disparities in achievement. So, this year, we have equity analyst position that was added to the equity department. And then, also bolstering professional development opportunities that support strategic priorities. So, this one is actually, was a nice one for me because we're, we, we were able to bolster professional development in areas that we needed. So, like multilingual services and a, and a number of other departments, but not necessarily spend a great deal more on professional development. Because when we were having those discussions, right? About how fiscal accountability is not just up to me or the business office, it's all of our responsibilities. It's a district-wide goal. And, you know, I just really wanna give credit where credit's due. That I had great colleagues that came back and said, you know, I think that we can do something different with our professional development. So, whether that means that we travel to a different place than was typical in the past or whether it means that we do train the trainer opportunity so that we have someone here that can be a resource and then could use that knowledge and train other staff members rather than staff members having to travel to places for this professional development. I think that there's just been a number of creative ways that a number of people have approached that, that item where we know that we're gonna be able to really up the professional development, but not necessarily upping the cost, right? Because everything that we're doing isn't always gonna be an addition, an additional expenditure. And so, just recognizing that has been great. So, also, the addition of a family and community engagement coordinator. So, building engagement and trust with families that are traditionally marginalized, just a position that we're very excited about just based on the feedback from the community and being able to be in a position where we can be responsive to the needs of the community in that way. And then, see, didn't I say that people were talking about my points, right? So, we talked about the funding for dual credit with Oakden, right? We're continuing to build our career pathways model, but there's also a new health science classes and programming. Actually, in the packet for tonight, we are also talking about the construction for a new health sciences suite. And so, we're just super excited about all of that and just really looking forward to the many ways that we're gonna be able to foster that program. And so, and then also, the expansion of job shadow, the job shadow program that we have here each year, right? We're doing more and more numbers with that as well. So, we're having the budget hearing. And then, of course, final budget approval would be next, the next step. And then, as I mentioned before, filing the budget with the county clerk within 30 days of the budget approval. Says no later than October 31st. That's code, but obviously, 30 days from now will come before then, so. Questions?
Amazing. And I, I highlighted some things too, but you said much of what I have highlighted, so I won't say it again. But it's really, it's really great. So, thank you. Thank you to you and your team. And I know it's a lot of work, but I really appreciate you recognizing that, that it's not just you and your department. It's everybody's role and job. Everybody has, has a piece of this. And you have to understand, I mean, you really have to understand what's happening in this school, in this district, what we value. You, it's, it's especially important for you to get that. So that when you make the, the decisions, these hard decisions and you're trying to anticipate, you know, what's gonna come in and conservative budgeting, I mean, you, you have to, you have to know what, what our values are and, you know, our goals and how we measure them. I mean, you have to really, you have to get it. So, this tells me that, you know, you, you do. So, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you so much, especially for that whole section at the end on values-based budgeting. And, and just breaking down, I loved, especially appreciated the highlights of the budget that are changes that go directly towards that values-based budgeting approach. We've never had that before. And every year, we get this massive document. We've gotta like sift through it all and it's impossible to figure out what's new or different or how that links to our values. So, that's, that segment I thought was terrific. So, I have one question and comment, related comment. In years past, our contribution as an organization to the Evanston Cradle to Career effort has been a line item somewhere in this budget. And in, in years past, it's been 50K. For the life of me, I can't find it. I was looking again. I don't know if it's in here or if it's just hidden in a way that I couldn't find. I even tried searching all the different terms. And I know we put it in the budget because we've been one of the main partners of Cradle to Career, because we wanna get this thing done every year. And I've gone along with that year after year after year. So, I guess the first question is, is it in here still?
It is still in there.
Okay. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna take your word for it. I don't know where it's tucked in, but I couldn't find it. This is the first year where I really, I'm, I'm sort of making a, a comment. This isn't really a question now that I've confirmed it's in there. I really have a problem supporting that 50K ask again this year. And it's the first time in, I think, 13 or so years because I've been involved with Cradle to Career since its inception. And I've been a huge proponent of Cradle to Career. But over the course of the last year or two in particular, I have absolutely no clear sense of what that organization... And I'm looking at you, Kendra, it's not your organization. So, I'm just, you know, you're just, I'm just making eye contact with somebody here. I, I truly am having a hard time understanding what the organization is doing as an organization, what our role is in that organization. We have been intimately involved as an institution with a Prepared for Adult Life Action Team, again, since the inception. I've attended a bunch of those meetings. Monique has been involved since the beginning. Pete, Marcus have all been involved since the beginning. And we've spent a lot of time and energy around trying to support the effort. I don't disagree with what I think the goals of that group are. But over the last year or two, I have absolutely no idea what we've done to advance those goals. And there appears to be no accountability mechanism in place. And we've had some changeover in the executive director and leadership. And I was willing for a year or two to wait that out and see how it goes. I, but $50,000 is a lot of money. For, for many people, that's a year's salary. And we could get a lot done with that money, I think, directly. And you, you gave some excellent examples in your discussion, in your breakdown of what values-based budgeting is all about. Some of those efforts that you're highlighting are, you know, in that 50K range. Or that could be contributed towards it. So, I have a problem with it. I would like to pull that item out of this budget because I don't have a problem with anything else in the budget. And I'm, I'm not normally one to, you know, try and tear apart the budget and nit, nitpick over these kinds of line items. But, but I'm not gonna support that. I, I can't in good conscience. I'm, I'm looking at an agenda for the partner meeting for Cradle to Career coming up, I think, next week. And then, we have a PAL meeting, I think, maybe in another week and a half. And there is nothing in that agenda that suggests to me that we are taking a different course towards holding ourselves accountable for what we're trying to achieve in that organization. Instead, we're just gonna spend a few hours talking about a lot of activities in and around Evanston. There's no discussion of our goals, how we're measuring our progress towards those goals, what sort of change and focus it's going to take to achieve them. And so, I've talked enough. I just wanted to make this point. I want, and I don't know logistically if it's a, if it's a motion to pull that out of this budget. I'm very happy to support everything else. And, and I can make the motion on the full budget. I can make a motion to extract that.
I think it's probably when we get around to voting for the...
And that's, do we vote tonight or next time?
I think we're voting tonight.
We vote tonight? Okay.
We have to vote tonight.
Just, no, just real quick. So, first of all, if Mary's watching, you got on so much earlier than she ever did. And so, sorry to Mary, but I'm glad for you. And secondly, just really, you said it, and I hope you genuinely know that we value this and respect it, that you are, and all this work that you, your team, and really, everybody does to align the, the budget with all the important things that we do and all the creative things we do, doesn't happen if we don't have the money. And so, you know, I'm just so grateful for your leadership on that and, and everyone's part, you know, to make that happen. Because it isn't, I say this almost every year, it's not the norm at all, school districts around the country. It doesn't work out the way it works out here in terms of really saying, we care about this and that's what we're gonna pay for. Not everybody has the political will or whatever it is to get that done. So, I really applaud you for that. And then, my last little question is just to talk, maybe it's you, maybe it's Marcus, but two seconds about the family outreach because I'm really excited about that piece of work and just wonder if you can talk a little bit about what that person's gonna do or doing, you know, any, any tidbits.
Sure, I guess I can do that. First, thank you, Kendra, you did such a great job. And I'm also really excited about this budget. And we put a lot of exciting things in that budget transmittal letter that Kendra lifted up tonight. And one is this family engagement coordinator. So, this, this, this particular strategy emerged out of the talkbacks that we did last year. And, you know, as a part of my first-year superintendent, I got out and bowed in the community. And in one particular talkback, I think Pat Savage-Williams was there. It was just a lot of appreciation for what ETHS was doing, but also, there was still a great distance, I felt, from this particular community of, of folks who was at St. Nick's and, and our efforts. And I said, we have to do a better job at connecting our intentions and to what our heart is, to what the impact is really in the community. And so, this particular position is specifically designed to create more trust, more activity, more events for some of our students and families who, you know, you know, feel like we, we do an okay job, but there's such a gap between what we do and what the needs are, right? So, being proximate to those needs, being proximate to what the families are... We had a lot of great dialogue and a lot of great ideas that came out of there last year. And so, this person, and we wanna hire another, right? We're hiring, we're hiring two because we really wanna be strategic in our efforts. And this is not just, oh, I'm gonna check the box. This is a part of creating multiple roads, multiple opportunities, multiple avenues to engage so that it doesn't matter, so that that touch point doesn't just come from our, let's say, our multi-language coordinator, it's coming from every aspect of the district. So, we're really excited about it, the, the recommendation for the particular individual that we're hiring as in the personnel agenda tonight. And I'm really excited about the effort. So, that's what, I hope I was clear with the, with that. So, yeah, really excited about it. Also, excited about our brand-new multilingual services department. That's brand-new, right? And we're looking to expand our multilingual services, expand the teachers that we have in that department. As Pete mentioned, Dr. Lindsay Rose, who is heading up that department, will be coming to introduce that to the board at the next meeting. So, there is a lot of, of equity-based programming that is reflecting our values, that we really need to put our resources where they're needed most. And that's reflected in the budget transmittal letter and definitely what Kendra, those line items that Kendra was able to attach to those items and more.
You know, I actually think that the first slide you started with in explaining your value-based budget, I think there were four points. I think that's your, your equity outcome and measurement. I think, I, I think you do maybe think about taking value base out of the, the goal because that's the outcome. I mean, that's like the delivery. But it's, it's the four points you made and you can measure that. I mean, did we have layoffs or did you? And then, the examples become everything that you just talked about, right? So, no, I, I think it's an outstanding job. You should train others. I mean, it's, because this is hard. This is not easy for any, at this moment, any institution to do. So, not only explaining the numbers, but the end result and connecting it so that it makes sense and it aligns with the work that you're doing. So, but everybody in the community will understand those four points of value-based budgeting. So, it's good, good stuff.
It is so important for us to continue to be communicative and transparent and, and make sure that those tie-ins are obvious. I really have appreciated the conversation tonight around the, the goals and the dashboard and the budget. I mean, we're, we're connected and clearly connected, so.
Can I say one more?
I mean, what Gretchen said, I, I do, I think it's important that I go on the record and say that I support that. However, it's more complicated than that, right? But I, I definitely get what you're saying. And I don't wanna speak for anybody else, so I would say that you're not by yourself in trying to really stay true to what we believe Cradle could do, like the impact we truly have hope and desire and what it can do for this, this community and, and what the, the mission is and what it means to our students. I think we are still trying to figure out in a community like Evanston what collective impact looks like. And I, I think that is the hard thing because we are, on one end, we're so privileged to have all the institutions that we have. And then, the issue is none of us know how to work together, right? So, it's like, it's really hard to collaborate because, oh, that's not my thing, that's your thing. Or, you know, I'm focused on my thing and I gotta stay in my lane and I don't wanna share my data and I don't want, you know? And it's just, it's, it's, it's confusing and it's complicated. And, but I, I just, you know, I just wanna say, I get it. I get it because there's confusion and there's frustration on many different levels and, and hopefulness that we can get this right eventually, but I don't know. So, I didn't want you to think you were by yourself because you're not. know. So, I didn't want you to think you were by yourself, because you're not. And I think it is absolutely something that this board should seriously think about, you know? I think it is, it's critical that we just not say we're going to do this, but that we start doing our homework and researching, what does that impact look like? Why are we doing this? Is it important for us to stay in this? What's the impact to the community? How much longer, maybe? How much time do we give it, you know, for it to work? But we should examine this and not take it for face value. Because like you said, I'm thinking about everything you just talked about. And Marcus, I'm listening to what you just said. And then Pete said, we're going to get a presentation. And I'm excited around that. And I'm thinking about the $50,000, too, in a different way.
Right.
You know, I'm thinking about the impact you're already making and the work that we have to do and the partners we can maintain and do. So, you know, I just want to say that, that we should all be asking questions, not to say we're not going to support it, but we should ask questions. We're paying.
Thanks, Monique. I just, I just want to say thank you. And I, you and I have talked a lot over the years about this. And we've sat in on a lot of meetings together. So I appreciate that. And I know where you're coming from, and I...
And I'll just add that I think it's important that this board is in a position, and myself included, to, let's say, force the conversation that really needs to be had about how our monies are being spent.
Agreed, agreed. And, you know, just to hold ourselves accountable and to hold myself accountable on this, you know, maybe we need some more conversation at the board meetings about this. I've been, I've been the board representative, along with our administrators. And Monique has a different role because of your job at the Y. And, you know, it's a little different than that. Now Leah's one of our new, one of the new representatives to Cradle to Career. So it'll be good to have your involvement there. And I just think we need to elevate our consciousness around, you know, over the course of, I can't even do the math, but let's just, 12 times 50 is a lot of money. I mean, it's not just the $50,000 this year. And I just, I can't point to very much. I mean, I think our PAL team has done some good things over the years, but certainly over the last couple, not much of anything.
I think one of the things the PAL team did was to hire Tana Fransellno as a full-time ETHS employee outside of Cradle or MEAC.
Yeah, there you go. And that's where, you know, our money can go to when we bring it in-house and we hold ourselves accountable for what really needs to get done. And all the partners need to be doing that. And I, you know, I trust in our community partners, but they all have to step up. So, anyway, there you have it.
Well, I think that when we get there, we'll pull that. And personally, you know, I feel like we really do need more conversation and steady discussion before we vote on that piece.
Yeah, I mean, check it out.
Yeah.
I just wanted to highlight one other thing that's, we haven't, Kendra mentioned it, but we haven't explicitly talked about it. And that was, we do have more and new school refusal programming that we're investing in, supporting kids who are just still challenged by various aspects of school. And I don't know if Dr. Kenzie wanted to just briefly just highlight what we're doing and how we're investing in school refusal for kids that need it.
Yeah. So just to add, as we think about school refusal, we think about in-school truance as well as out-of-school truance, and how we can reengage students and build those relationships. We have two student advocates who we are collaborating with North Cook on and are in our building, are out in the community, really building those relationships right now with families as well to reengage students and get connected here. So we're really excited about that, both of whom are community members, and one of whom was a longtime ETHS staff member. So that's great to further develop all the relationships that exist. And we have a classroom intervention teacher whose aim is to continue to build the continuum of services for both general education and students with IUPs, so that we are figuring out, how can we get as creative as possible to reengage students, and then also look at the short-term interventions and then the longer-term interventions. Just a little snippet.
Nice.
And all of that's brand-new.
Wow. So even the new stuff that we're doing is pretty, it's challenging, but it's really thinking out of the box. And I really appreciate that. And, yeah, I think we're doing, doing some good stuff. Are there other questions or discussion or comments about the budget? Okay, hearing none. Let's see, where am I? Oh, here. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Williams. I won't, yeah. So we've already heard questions. Next is the public comment portion for, of the budget hearing. Are there any public comments?
There are no public comments.
Okay, thank you. Hearing none, I declare this hearing adjourned. The board will take action on the budget.
Thank you, board.
Thank you. Nice job. All right. So items for action.
First is the final budget. So I think there's a recommendation to pull the line from Cradle to Career.
Right, so.
So I think you have to...
Do you want to make that motion?
Sure. I move that we pull the Cradle to Career line item and hold it until some future point.
Yes. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Monique.
Thank you.
You were looking at me?
I did.
Monique.
Yes. Could we have a roll call, please? And this is just on the motion.
Livingston?
Yes.
Unseld?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Ecarles?
Yes.
Rolwitz?
Yes.
Antti?
Yes.
Savage Williams?
Yes. Okay. All right. The next item is approval of the final budget minus that item. Could I have a motion for approval, please?
So moved. Second?
Roll call, please.
Livingston?
Yes.
Unseld?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Ecarles?
Yes.
Rolwitz?
Yes.
Antti?
Yes.
Savage Williams?
Yes. The next item is approval of final Park School budget. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second?
Roll call, please.
Unseld?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Ecarles?
Yes.
Rolwitz?
Yes.
Antti?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Yes. Next item is approval of district goals, just the goals. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I just ask a question? Are we tweaking any of the language that Monique was talking about in that, in the fiscal, or should we just approve it now and fiddle down the road? Okay. I just, I just want to clarify.
And you actually also had a little tweak.
Yeah, that was more of a typo thing. It was just, I think Monique's was a little more substantive.
Yes, yes.
So...
We do, though, want the goals approved as amended by...
With the status.
With the status, yeah. Will we remove the status on the goal one?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Makes sense.
Thank you. Did we get our motion? We did, right?
Yeah.
Who's second?
Second.
Okay. Now we have a second. Okay, roll call, please.
Parsons?
Yes.
Ecarles?
Yes.
Rolwitz?
Yes.
Antti?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Yes. The next item is October 23, 2023, joint board meeting cancellation. Can we have a motion, please?
So moved. Second?
Roll call, please.
Ecarles?
Yes.
Rolwitz?
Yes.
Antti?
Yes.
Livingston?
No.
Unseld?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. The next item is the Latino Heritage Month proclamation. And Leah is going to read this both in Spanish and English.
Okay.
A lo largo de nuestra historia, nuestra nación ha sido enriquecida por el pasado histórico de todos los que llaman hogar a los Estados Unidos de América. Los ancestros de la comunidad hispana latina han estado en este continente por siglos, precediendo las fronteras actuales de los Estados Unidos. Y generaciones han tejido las fibras únicas en el diverso tejido de nuestro país y jugaron un importante rol en la formación de nuestro carácter nacional como un pueblo de ilimitadas posibilidades. Los hispanos y latinos contribuyen al éxito de nuestra nación de maneras extraordinarias. Ellos sirven en las fuerzas armadas y el gobierno. Asisten a las escuelas en toda América y fortalecen la economía. Ellos son el padre que trabaja en dos empleos para darle a sus hijos una mejor vida, y la madre que se aventura a tomar un riesgo y comenzar un negocio. Ellos son el estudiante que persigue sus más grandes aspiraciones mediante la educación superior. Ellos son el residente legal permanente que busca naturalizarse y convertirse en ciudadano, y el líder de negocios cuyos seres queridos han vivido en los Estados Unidos por generaciones. Ellos muchas veces son bilingües, una invaluable intelectual habilidad del idioma que nos esforzamos en brindar a todos nuestros estudiantes. Cada día vemos el tremendo impacto que ellos tienen en nuestras comunidades, y ellos reflejan una verdad perdurable en el corazón de nuestra nación. No importa de dónde vienen o de dónde son sus raíces, con trabajo duro y percebencia pueden lograrlo en América. Para honrar los logros de los hispanos y latinos en América, el Congreso mediante Ley Pública 1402, según enmienda, ha autorizado y solicitado emitir una proclama designado del 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre como el mes nacional de la herencia hispana latina. Por tanto, nosotros, la Junta de Educación del Distrito 202, proclamamos que en celebración de los excepcionales líderes hispano y latinoamericanos del pasado, presente y futuro, y las valiosas contribuciones de la comunidad hispana latina, proclamamos del 15 de septiembre de 2023 al 15 de octubre de 2023 como el mes de la herencia hispana latina en la Escuela Preparatoria del Municipio de Evanston. Throughout our history, our nation has been enriched by the storied pasts of all who call the United States of America home. Ancestors of America's Hispanic-Latino community have been on this continent for centuries, preceding the current boundaries of the United States. And generations have woven unique threads into the diverse fabric of our country and played an important role in shaping our national character as a people of limitless possibility. Hispanics and Latinos contribute to our nation's success in extraordinary ways. They serve in the military and government, attend schools across America, and strengthen the economy. They are the father who works two jobs to give his children a better life, and the mother who ventures out to take a risk and start a business. They are the student who pursues their greatest aspirations through highest, through higher education. They are the lawful, permanent resident who seeks to naturalize and become a citizen, and the business leader whose loved ones have lived in the United States for generations. They are oftentimes bilingual, and invaluable intellectual language skill we strive to provide all our students. Each day, we see the tremendous impact they have on our communities, and they reflect an enduring truth at the heart of our nation. No matter where you come from or where your roots are, with hard work and perseverance, you can make it in America. To honor the achievements of Hispanics and Latinos in America, the Congress by Public Law 10402, as amended, has authorized and requested issuing annually a proclamation designating September 15 through October 15 as National Hispanic-Latino Heritage Month. Therefore, we, the Board of Education of District 202, proclaim that in celebration of past, present, and future exceptional Hispanic-Latino-American leaders and the valuable contributions of the Hispanic-Latino community, do hereby proclaim September 15, 2023, through October 15, 2023, as Hispanic-Latino Heritage Month at Evanston Township High School.
Thank you. Could I have a motion for acceptance, please?
So moved. Second?
Roll call, please.
Rolwitz?
Yes.
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 Unseld?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Savage Williams?
Yes. Okay. The next item is the consent agenda, which consists of approval of commercial athletic sponsorship, Planet Fitness, approval of construction contract for nursing skills lab and office suite, approval of the yearbook contract, and approval of minutes from August 7, 2023, both regular meeting and closed session, release for public information minutes of closed session from January 2023 to June 2023, and destruction of closed session tapes, approval of bills, treasurer's report from June of 2023, and personnel report.
So moved. Second?
Roll call, please.
Antti?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Unseld?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Ecarles?
Yes.
Rolwitz?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, next item, old and new businesses. Is there any old or new business that we need to discuss? Closing or polling of the board. Mira, you want to talk about the open house?
Well, Marcus, you highlighted it already. So forgive me for being out of turn. I just, I experienced such a wonderful night and wanted to make sure to highlight it. So thank you.
It was. It was great. Yes. It was really good. Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Booster Palooza was fun.
Oh, yeah. Right. Super.
So was kids, cats.
Kids and cats.
Kids and cats and kids, right?
Yes.
Right. It was a lot of kids. It was a lot of kids, including my grandson. But it was, it was nice. It was nice. Also, though, I want to shout out our superintendent, Dr. Campbell. He was invited yesterday to speak alongside the president of North, North, oh, Lord, I can't even think. Yeah, Northwest, it's getting late, Northwestern University and, what do they call, CPS?
Superintendent.
The superintendent. And they, and he spoke about sort of kind of the real effects of the affirmative action issue that, you know, got passed, and how that could be and is impacting us as the only high school in Evanston. And, you know, I want to say that Dr. Campbell made it very real and really got to the point. I mean, that was the premise that what was presented for all three to speak upon. And you did it very well, to the point that everybody in the audience, like, that's the only name they talked about. Like, Dr. Campbell did an excellent job. Dr. Campbell, you know. And it really, it just, when I'm sitting here now and I'm thinking about what you said yesterday, it's all connected, right? So it's not, like, the budget presentation, what we've talked about since we've been here, the passion is there, the commitment is there, the work is there, and the pushing and the boldness and the fact that we won't let up. We will continue to do our work. We will continue to do our work for the kids in this community. Was so much there, it was really very great to hear you be our superintendent speaking about that. I'm just saying, you know, it was really good and it was a great contrast. You know, and I'm not disrespecting the other two, but I'm very proud to represent ETHS and to have you stand before those folks and tell them who we are and what we do. So it was really, really good, really good.
That's great, that's another opportunity to tell our story.
Yep, that was it.
And that is really important.
It was excellent.
Another time. All right. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
I move for adjourns.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.